Let's, uh, let's call the meeting to order. Pastor?
Okay. Let's pray. Stay with me. Let's open it with prayer. God, we just thank you for this great nation that we live in, and we thank you, Lord, that we have a republic, we have the opportunity to vote, to govern ourselves, and to make our voices be heard, and, God, we just thank you for that privilege, and we know all the rights come from you. We just thank you for the great city of Harrison, all of our civil servants, and all the people that make this city great. God, give us wisdom as leaders. We know we've been put in these positions. We ask to represent the people and to make the right choices. Lord, bless the city of Harrison. Ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Join me in pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Before we start with our agenda tonight, I think I'd like to take a few minutes and reflect on the community center election. Obviously, it didn't go the way we wanted it to go. You know, the people spoke, and there are some things that, uh, that we proposed that they didn't want. But with that said, I want to thank you folks mainly, the council. It came before you three times, and all times it was unanimous. So you saw the need to do something, and it's my belief that we need to do something. Doing nothing, I don't think is going to be an option. So we'll have to see where that goes, and we'll keep you informed, but I think the group here, you know, they've been worked to death the last few months, and it's been pretty tough. But, you know, we had a thousand people say they wanted to spend forty million dollars, so that's inspiring, and, uh, and we'll see where we go with that. But again, thank you guys for, uh, for what you've done. So let's go ahead and get started. Mitch?
Mr. Mayor, in finance, we have four items. We'll start out with the Chamber of Commerce. We have Bob Largent here tonight to, uh, give us a short presentation.
Thank you, council. As you requested of the chamber in July of this year, when you approved a ten thousand dollar public funding for the chamber's economic development work via a contract with stipulations in it, you asked that the chamber come back to you in the October-November timeframe and request the, uh, a second economic development funding amount of ten thousand dollars. And we are here tonight to do that. At last council meeting, uh, we presented, though a couple of you were not here, we presented an economic development update that showed a little over eighty-eight million dollars invested in the city of Harrison and Boone County since January one of this year. And at that time, three hundred and eighty-eight new employees found work in Harrison since January one. Since that council meeting some three weeks ago, we have identified, uh, additional investment brings the total to a little over ninety-three million dollars since January one of this year, and over four hundred and twenty-five new employees. We will continue to identify, capture that data. There's no process in place, so we do what we can to do that. We're gathering the data through our BRE software that will give us more accurate information, but I simply wanted to update you that we continue to identify in a very serious growth mode, and we know we're going to do more. So this is our request for the council to consider to provide us with economic development funding this year for the additional ten thousand dollars. Be happy to take any questions from you at this time.
Uh, anyone on the committee have a question for Mr. Largent?
What's the proposal at this time?
Just the ten thousand dollars.
It's just ten thousand?
That was, that is correct.
For the current year?
For the current year, for 2019, we have made, at your request, at the mayor's request, we have submitted to the administration a request for calendar year 2020, or fiscal year 2020 for you, and the mayor has that in his proposed budget, we understand.
Yes, he does.
That would be separate from, from this action.
Right. Now, one of the considerations back when you were first here, I think Mr. Boswell was the one that made the motion-
Right.
-uh, for the original ten thousand and to, uh, to revisit this at this time. One of the considerations that was spoke, was brought to the attention of committee and council at the time was whether or not we would be able to fund that based on their current projected deficit or surplus.
That is correct.
So Luke, can you kind of give us an idea where we're at as far as, uh, at the current time?
So, unfortunately, I don't have sales tax numbers for October. However, if it hits projected numbers like we anticipate, um, we actually would be about break even at the end of this month, or at the end of October, maybe a little bit ahead of that, um, because we do have two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars budgeted as far as revenue that's not in there yet, and, uh, our current deficit, as it sits in our financials, is two hundred and sixty-three thousand. So, um, the last two months do have about a twenty-seven thousand dollar deficit. However, there's also about twenty-two thousand dollars that's not in there for, um, franchises. So, uh, not going to say we're going to break even, but we're gonna, we're gonna come off the close, and I do think it is, is, at this point in time, would be a good investment to do so. Um, and it's, uh, obviously, we're not going to hit the hundred and fifty thousand, I believe, as far as the, uh, projected budget.
In that being said, that's even taking into account the money that we lost through the-
It is.
...recovery by the state of Arkansas?
It is.
Okay. So, anybody else have any questions or comments?
I guess I would ask, Luke, do you feel comfortable with the second ten thousand dollars to-
Very much so.
I'd go ahead and make a motion in the committee. Can we send it?
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Um, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed the same?
Nay.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mr. Largent, I do have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
It was my understanding that you would give us a breakdown of how the money was spent, and I have not seen that, the original ten thousand.
I did not realize that we were going to do that. I certainly can provide that to you.
Was that not our-
I think that was one of the comments that was made at that time.
Okay. I apologize then. I missed that.
That is the reason I have to vote no, because we haven't seen that, and you were going to have it, have that to us in September and no later than October.
Uh, we did not receive the money until October. It was voted on in July. We received the, the money in October of this year. That money has in fact been spent on professional development, um, and in two other cases, I will give you a line item breakdown of the ten thousand dollars.
Well, that was Landers standing up.
I'm sorry.
And if you could provide that at council, that would be helpful.
I will provide that to you no later than Monday.
Okay. Thank you.
Keeping in mind we're turning around and waiting for council meeting, so.
I understand. I'll have that on Monday. Yes, no later than that.
That'll be fine.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is the 2020, um, budget, and, uh, I'm going to turn this to Luke. I've reviewed it three times. I go through the first time just a cursory look, and then I come back in detail two more times. I've had the discussion with Luke on a number of items. I can't find anything in this that I would be concerned about. Luke?
Uh, thank you, Mitch. Um, of course, I'm always working on it and always updating. This is the latest kind of summary page. Uh, one thing I want to note, there are some upgrades to, um, some, uh, water department facilities up on top of the hill that I did not get on here as far as the water and sewer big-ticket items, so I apologize for that. They're under the, uh, maintenance, I believe, line item. Wayne, you might correct me there if I'm wrong, but-
Building maintenance of your 100-02 and 100-03.
Um, I guess I'm here more to ask question, or see if you all have questions on what has been provided. There isn't really a whole lot of changes here. Um, what we're talking about is maybe a thousand dollars here, a thousand dollars there. It's not anything significant. We did add about a thousand dollars in safety supplies. We did update a couple salaries that, um, I had an error on there on the salary budget, but that is corrected in front of you for those that, that one and one printed out. Joel, I'll get you one too. I apologize I didn't print another salary budget, but, um, the only other thing that I guess I would bring up, um, one of the bigger items that we adjusted, uh, we started receiving our roll-off, um, RCF fees in the conservation department from inland. Um, we kind of started that in October, and I wanted to make sure that we were getting that before I really put that into a budget, and we did receive our first check for about fifteen hundred. So, um, they did say that was about average, so that's another eighteen thousand that would go in the conservation fund as far as revenue goes, um, which is actually really important because we're needing to buy a vehicle in there, and if we didn't have that money, uh, it, it would look as if we were going in the negative. So, um, wanted to make sure we got that updated. The big-ticket items that changed, of course, fire fund and police fund, we moved the revenues over, um, that are associated with them, um, to more accurately reflect what is supposed to be there. Fire fund, again, we broke it out now into two different divisions, and we have the fire division and then the community risk reduction division. Those are two of the major changes that you'll see. Um, and then, of course, health insurance, um, the big increase that we talked about and discussed, along with a 1.6 percent increase, um, for cost of living.
I will make the comment that I think that is certainly, given the, the nature of the health insurance increase, that it's generous to be giving that cost of living increase essentially. That's essentially a cola. Correct?
Yeah. I mean, that, well, that's an expense. Your, your cost of living-
Yeah.
-typically offsets your expenses.
Correct.
And that's kind of what has happened at this point. So, um, we are at a hundred and ninety thousand as far as a deficit budget in the general fund. Um, I think you all have seen some of those changes that we've made. Does anybody have any questions on that? I do have one more thing to bring up, but I want to see if there's any questions first. Pardon me. All right. Um, the only other thing I guess I, I would have as far as the budget that's not in there, and I've talked with Mitch about it, and I've talked with Mark, and I've talked with Mayor Jackson, um, whenever we moved over the code enforcement, um, items into the community risk reduction division of the fire department, um, we did so believing that we would be able to move some of the funding that was there for the code enforcement, um, over to help offset some of their expenses, um, especially this first year, taking that into consideration. And then in future years, um, of course, we moved over the code enforcement revenue into the fire fund, um, but that didn't quite make up for all the expenses that would come across with that. So, um, my proposal was to take a look at it every year. We have it budgeted, um, at about forty thousand dollars, um, of revenue. It's about eighty thousand dollars in expenses, um, but we can wait till the end of the, the year and do a one-time allotment over there to cover those expenses, um, rather than putting it in the budget and not knowing. Um, I figured that's probably the fairest way to do that, so that way we can know kind of what, what it is we need to reimburse them for, so.
During that discussion, one of the reasons why, uh, for the committee's knowledge, is if building permits go up, that could cover that. So we, we don't know at this point whether or not that would happen or not, depending on activity within the city, so we might not have to make that. But what we discussed was doing it, as Luke said, once a year after reviewing the expenses, so.
Okay. Um, I'm, we're here presenting. I wanted to make sure there's not any questions that we, um, didn't answer for you to be able to at least take it to council and discuss. It's not pertinent that you take it to council right now. Um, you know, we, we have to have it passed by January thirty-first, but obviously, the sooner the better. December is usually probably the most appropriate. That way we know what the, uh, salaries will be starting January one. That's easy, that's easiest for us. That way we don't have to go back and back day, typically what we would do, so.
Well, I would suggest or recommend that we wait until December to approve in case further review brings something that they have questions.
Could I ask a question? And, Mr. Mayor, this is really for you. I'd like to know how you feel. This is your first budget.
Right.
I would like to know how you feel about it. Do you feel comfortable with it? Or do you see strengths or weaknesses in it?
Well, of course, I had to rely on Wade and Luke a lot in many departments, but we really got down to it. I'm, I'm real proud. I, I keep on complimenting the police and fire, but they spent a lot of time on this because they've got another project going on, and this budget has a lot to do, and future budgets have a lot to do with the project. So they dug into it a lot, and, and I had to rely on Wade a lot in his department, but in the general budget, I, I feel real good about it because it's a little different than what I'm used to. Uh, you know, if I would budget something, or Jeff would, we'd be a little more realistic with revenue and things like that, and, and, but here we have a hundred and ninety thousand dollar deficit that we believe is going to be washed out next year. You know, we'll probably end up in the black, and so it's unusual to believe you're going to end up in the black and go ahead and project a hundred and ninety dollar, a thousand dollar deficit. That's just unusual for me, you know, the, the way of thinking there. Uh, you know, we're trending up. We had two months of sales tax at, I think, seven percent, and if we hit this third month at that, it's going to say something for next year's revenue, we believe. You know, we thought, well, two, let's let two, we got to see three, and if we see three, I think that'll be a real good sign, and that'll be here by the, uh, well, I don't know if it will or not. It may not, because we're moving the meeting up a week.
Yeah. We, we probably won't have it until, uh, December. And I, I'll send out an, an email telling you kind of what has happened with sales tax.
Over to October number?
Yes. Oh, what would have been reported in October, yes.
We saw the two biggest months probably of the year due to the holidays.
Unfortunately, those, you don't see until the next year because November gets reported in December, we get it in January. So, um, Black Friday, you don't actually get that until January of the next year, but yes.
Have we seen anything on internet sales and money coming back?
That's what we think could be happening right now with the two sevens.
Yeah. The two seven percent increases over the last couple of months, if that trend holds true over the next probably two or three months, we, we can assume then a seven percent increase, probably an overall number's increasing, and that's probably what would be the internet sales tax percentage there.
So I need to tell my wife to stay on Amazon?
I want you to tell her to keep going on.
Bye-bye.
Because we are receiving that, so.
I was hoping it'd be more than seven percent, but seven percent's a big hit.
Seven percent's a big number.
Yeah. That's a big number.
Well, and again, you know, we always compliment Luke and Wade and the rest of the staff here. You know, as I look through these, these numbers get closer and closer to being not just conservative but accurate. Uh, the basis of the revenue at ninety-nine percent of projected for the, uh, for the year, current year, is certainly conservative. Uh, if we were to have a downturn or whatever, we, you know, if we wouldn't get those increases, we wouldn't be looking for something that, you know, why did we miss this? So I think this, again, this budget and the new system that he's got, um, and a new way of projecting all of this, um, it's cleaner than budgets we've had in the past. So.
Good.
And I had very few, I had very few questions this time with him. I went through it with him, and, you know, where are you moving this? Like rental income, for one thing, is what would we be running? They gave me all those answers, so.
We had some cleaning up to do that, uh, kind of hurt the general budget, but we cleaned it all up.
Yeah, it is cleaner.
Yeah.
So, any other questions? If not, we will table that until the December meeting and discussion.
Great job. Thank you.
Okay.
Great job. Thank you.
Next item I discussed with the mayor, Vista for City Hall. Do you want to make, uh, any comments in regard to that?
Yeah. They were going to appear again today. I think a month ago at the committee meeting, they made a presentation, and they were hoping we could take on a Vista and contribute twelve thousand, and I think at that time, uh, well, we ended it by saying, can you wait till after the vote? With the idea that if we, uh, if we won, we would probably need a little more help. Uh, but because we didn't, I don't, I don't need the help here. Uh, I mean, you could always use it, but we don't even have a place to put people. And so I checked with Wade, and Wade said, "Yeah, if it's free, maybe," and, uh, I said, "No, it wouldn't be free." So, on the basis of the, uh, the twelve thousand dollar Vista, I think I would recommend that we not go forward with that.
Okay. So we will continue on, and the last thing is legislative audit. This is, again, one of those housekeeping things. We have to simply approve this. There's nothing in the audit. I went through it, and as Luke and I discussed, there's not any, any findings in here, so this is about as clean an audit you're going to ever have. There is nothing in here that they brought to the attention. There's nothing that looks out of, out of the norm or what would, they would be concerned with in the, in the lease, so. With that said, I would entertain a motion to-
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I was shocked when I picked it up and I opened it up. I mean, I was, I'm so used to looking at audits, not only for the city, but for the school district.
Yep.
If you've messed with these enough, and I know Mitch has, you go to the back two pages.
Yes, sir.
That's where they're either going to. So you pat you on the back or stick a knife in your back, and there was no-
There's no findings.
No findings whatsoever, and-
That's awesome for Luke and his team. Absolutely awesome.
What, what all these department had to do and what Luke does to keep their finger on the, for the motion, the amount of millions of dollars that go through the system.
Well, the two municipal organizations that I work, have the pleasure of working with, they continue to clean these things up, and again, those little, um, segregation of duties that virtually every organization ends up getting, and none of that is in here, folks. So it's as clean as it can be. Public ought to be very happy. Okay. Uh, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed the same? Motion carries. We'll move this on to council, and that is all out of questions.
I told Joel, uh, since he took a little vacation, that I'd, uh, I'd kind of handled the next two items, happened to be a little familiar with them, but, uh, House of Hope, if you want to come up, uh, two days ago, when we got the real cold weather, uh, I received a call from Bill, and I think he talked to Chief Lowry also, and, uh, Bill informed me that, uh, we kind of knew what they wanted to do in, coming up in December, but with the cold weather, he wanted to know if he could, uh, let some people spend the night there, and so we said sure, uh, and then anything further would be, uh, subject to council approval, so.
Well, thank you, and thank you for that. It was never our intent to circumvent the council. Uh, it was just this extremely dangerous cold weather out there, and so it was Tuesday and came down here, talked to Christine, she started making the calls, got, and got the mayor on the phone, and, uh, got permission to do that, because we certainly didn't want to later ask for forgiveness. We would rather do it by asking for permission, so that's why we did that. Um, just quickly, um, when I look at December, when I look at the weather fork, or actual low temperatures, I actually went out to the NOAA, you know, the National Oceanic, uh, website, and in Harrison, uh, eighty-four percent of the nights had temperatures below forty degrees, and eighty-one percent in January. So during those months, and in February, actually, actually, February wasn't as bad, but it just shows the need, I mean, it's, gets cold, and especially in, especially in January, it's cold consistently. And so that's why we're looking for, um, for help with a warming station, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to Cindy.
I kind of spoke last month about how we, uh, Brandy Church and Harrison Faith Church opened their doors, um, two nights a week, and we would drive our, Brandy Church, we would drive our bus to town and, and pick up anyone that needed shelter for the night, and drive them back out to church, and feed them, and, um, allow them to shower, and provide them with clean clothes and laundry services and breakfast, and just, um, really, uh, try to be the hands and feet of Jesus so that we can reach as many people as we can. And, um, God laid this on my heart in December of last year, and it took me a few weeks to get things organized, but we did it for January and February of this year. Um, the most we had was seven, the least we had was zero. Um, we just really want to, you know, to be able to, uh, show our love of Jesus as a community. Um, in order to do that, I think to reach more people and to help more people, we would need to come to town to do that. Uh, people don't want to load every possession they have on a bus and drive, you know, ten minutes or fifteen minutes outside of town, and for Harrison Faith, it was the same way they were bringing their van in. Um, so what we, uh, would like to do is be able to, um, have a host of volunteers at House of Hope so that they could be there. Um, we have, uh, when we did it at our campus, we had, uh, people that stayed up all night long. We just rotated shifts, so no one was unsupervised. They were never left there to be able to roam freely. We had designated area they could stay in, um, and it would be the same, the same thing at House of Hope. No one would sleep. I mean, there would always be someone awake there with them. Um, I believe that, uh, they've got four there tonight, and they had two there last night. Like I said, the most that we had last year was seven, um, and that was on a, it was freezing rain, and we drove our bus into town and slid all the way back to, back to home base. But, um, anyway, we just really, um, my vision was that we could have churches every night of the week that would be willing to stay at House of Hope and supervise, um, this warming station. And so far, we have four.
We have, uh, we have three churches and six eighty-eight engineering company that are made of dirt here in town, and they've also gone and sponsored, so we actually have four right now.
And, um, then we're having an information meeting, um, if everything goes well tonight. Our plan is to have an information meeting on Tuesday at House of Hope at three-thirty, and I've reached out to a few other pastors in town who are going to attend that, um, just to see, you know, what we can do and how we can do it. Um, so I guess, do you guys have any questions as really close?
You no longer have your security guard that you introduced to us?
Security guard?
Correct.
No, he wasn't.
There was, uh-
There, there was. He used to stay the night, but, uh, he's no longer there.
And you're not replacing him then?
No, not right now. I mean, we went since 2012 without a security guard. It just, it was just an opportunity. He needed a place to stay. He was willing to stay up at night to guard, and so that's, that's what we did, so, uh, we don't have that now, so he's, he's no longer there. But we have, the building has a security system in it, so if it, if, if the door's open, we hear a phone call.
So your request tonight is to continue this through February, is that correct?
Yes. Last year, we did it through February. Um, March warmed up so much that it wasn't necessary or needed in March.
Last year, you took them to the church.
Or this year. I guess it was this year.
This year, you're asking to-
Yes. This year, we're asking to bring our volunteers here instead of them to us.
And are you talking every night, or is, or only when the temperature goes below a certain degree?
We haven't really decided. We've talked about, kind of thrown around the idea of either one of those. I don't know what that temperature break would be. We did it every night just for conformity, so that our volunteers would know to be there, when to be there, and there was no, um, gray area. You know, we didn't have, um, people coming for shelter and us not having anyone there, so that's the reason we did it every night, was, um, just for conformity purposes, but we could do, um, a temperature, I mean, we kind of discussed that, but-
Yeah. Personally, I'd rather, especially during those two months, I'd rather have it every night so that everybody understands, the fire department, the police, they all understand that is, these months.
And when we did it in Bergman, we had, we spoke with Sheriff Moore and some deputies that are in that area, and they patrol the parking lot every night, and we never had the least bit of problem whatsoever.
How many people on average a night were you housing, or?
Um, well, like I said, average was probably three or four.
That's what you said.
Yeah, we had seven total one night. That was the most we had, and it was kind of, we opened in an emergency situation, and, um, the hospital had some people there that needed, that needed shelter because they were ill.
What would be the maximum that you think that might, that you could house, say that, you know, you're at the House of Hope and?
Well, I think right now we have six.
Right, right now, we have six cops.
And we have eleven more at our church that we would be willing to bring and donate, And we have 11 more at our church that we would be willing to bring and donate. So we could do 17 to 20.
And speaking with, to the fire chief, he was almost like, there was, it was almost like there wasn't a restriction. Obviously, you have to have enough space for the people, but if we ended up having 15 when it's 10 degrees, I mean...
Yeah, I'm just curious.
...it's not enough to handle.
And she, how did you feel about, I mean, is you comfortable with that? I mean, I guess you probably put smoke alarms in. It's not necessarily the daytime, I guess, but...
Well, the two things that we spoke about was, one, I don't think we really spoke about frequency as much, and that does concern me. I think frequency, we're starting talking about that it becomes a different type of occupancy at that point. But on temporary basis, in the locking arrangements of the building and the fire watch nightly that they have to have, is some provisions that we're gonna do on temporary. But again, if we're talking about it all night or every night for three months, that's not temporary. That's, that's usage every night. So we'll, we'll have to discuss that as far as, but no, we don't want people out here freezing every night. We don't have...
No, I, I would love to see it. I just want to make sure it's in a safe order and our liability.
Right, and that's, that's exactly what I explained to them, is that, you know, we, everybody in this room has a vested responsibility to our citizens, so we have to make sure we protect them.
And you know, I, I know that it's in the flood zone, so of course we're watching the weather and what have you. And it's just, you know, precautions. When they brought in the House of Hope, I mean, that was my understanding, it would never be overnight. And I understand, we also have a need, we don't have anything to provide for people in the inclement weather to go overnight. And we need something.
Well, in limited research I did on this topic, communities generally have some sort of ordinance, and I'm not proposing that, but they either do it by date or temperature. And so they'll say anytime after, say, November the 15th or whatever, depending on the community. But generally, they have an ordinance covering this because it is not exactly temporary if it's open all the time. So I don't know how that affects this. And will there be any meals being prepared there or anything, any...
Normally, we would provide a meal for them. We would, we provided dinner and then because we were bringing them back to town on Saturday, we also provided breakfast for them.
But will it be prepared there or prepared outside and brought in?
Probably prepared there since they have a kitchen there that we can use. Or, you know, I can't guarantee that. Some churches might, you know...
Understood.
I have a question. And this is a tough question. It's tough for me, I don't know, maybe it's not tough for some, but why are these folks homeless?
I don't think I can answer that. I mean, the, the people that we ran into last year, there was a couple that their house burned down and they didn't have insurance. So they didn't have anywhere to go or any money to get housing.
And there aren't, what I'm asking is, are there not other programs to help them get a home?
I'm, I don't know that I can answer that.
Well, like I know one person, last night, she got off work at nine o'clock, but she was living in her car. And where she was working, it would probably take her a while to actually save enough money to be able to get into a place. Sometimes it's you're waiting for housing.
Well, we have a housing director here, Shonda, takes care of that sort of thing.
We don't have immediate, we don't have a rapid placement.
And in some cases, it's literally, there is no place. On the one hand, there's a lot, there are vouchers available, but on the other hand, it's trying to find the places to actually put them in, because there aren't any. Rental is very tough. Rental expenses are high. And so Shonda's, I mean, you know, I, I understand what she's doing, because she has to hold her budget line. So she'll, you know, her, her top dollar, say, for a two bedroom might be, you know, $500. A landlord might say, well, I can get $575 a day of the week. So it's, it's tough for a landlord then, now maybe all of a sudden, on this form of a, but you know, then, then it gets tougher for the landlords to say, well, yeah, I'm gonna take that $75 hit to help. And so we really need more affordable, lower income housing.
Well, some people may frown upon me for saying it, but I'm gonna go ahead and say it. My concern is creating an, an environment of enabling, you know, I don't know all the extenuating circumstances of this, but I do know that there are plenty of jobs and plenty of opportunity for people for, to move up. And I don't want to create, in the city of Harrison, a place where we're...
Like California.
Attracting it. I mean, I don't know if you've read any of the stories coming out of California, but it's obscene what's happening there. And I don't want to see that happen here in Harrison.
For instance, one of the, let me just give you an example. One of the gentlemen that we helped last year, he was at our very first warming station, one of those seven that were at our first night. And he was very young, 22. He came in with a big brown box with all of his, everything that he owned was in this box. And, you know, we were kind of chatting with him. And of course, you know, we want to talk to everyone about Jesus, that's, you know...
I share, I share that sentiment, I surely do.
Yes, and so we were just talking with him about, about Christ and about how he can move forward and do better for himself. Well, now, he has a home. I see him all over town riding a scooter and he is waiting tables at El Mexico Lido.
And those are the kind of results we want to see.
Yeah, we, we not only, we don't want to enable anyone, we want to help anyone that we can. And we want them to move forward and grow. But we, I don't feel like we can really do that if we don't know who those people are. You know, if we don't know how to reach them. And Bill probably has a, a better idea of that, but I'm very green, is, I don't know if that's the right word, naive, maybe that's the word. And I just really want to see anyone that wants to help, to get help. We don't want to, I don't want to create a 365 day a year homeless shelter. That's not what I'm looking to do. I don't even want to find volunteers for seven days a week. I just want to do one day a week. And if in one day a week that I can help someone be better, then that's what Christ wants us to do. He wants, I'm sorry, I'm getting all weird and emotional. But he wants us to be the hands and feet of Jesus. That's what he wants. And that's all that I'm looking to do here and want to do.
Okay, well, thank you.
I have another question.
Yes, ma'am.
Who prepares the meals down there?
For this warming station? It would be the...
No, no. Every day.
Oh, every day.
Do you have a hard cook?
Yeah.
And how many meals do you provide a day?
Two.
Two.
Breakfast and lunch. And so the ones that were going, like, be there, like a Monday night, if, if we were open Monday night as a warming station and Tuesday morning, they would be there and they could have breakfast. And then they would kind of go on their way. But hopefully, if it's, if it's an opportunity for us to help them, then...
And the dinner meal, I don't believe, would be an additional expense to House of Hope. That would be something that whoever is filling that position with volunteers, they would bring that meal in, so it wouldn't be an expense to House of Hope at all for that dinner meal extra.
Is it possible we can get a motion that would allow them to continue to the next week and...
Well, we can't do that unless it's a council meeting.
No, we have a council meeting next week.
We could do it next week.
Yeah, correct. But I think they're looking for our blessing to continue up until next week. To where, what I'd like to see is Mark can give us a little more information on the safety.
And I do believe the temperature's supposed to rise after Saturday.
It is.
So, you know, it might not be an issue next week.
Okay, okay.
But, you know, we would like to continue through Saturday if we can.
It's Tuesday at 3:30, household.
The 19th, yes.
He can be there too.
Yes, absolutely.
And we could actually talk about the whole question, like, do you do it just based on temperature or...
And if, yeah, if anybody has any questions, or, the 19th is Tuesday at 3:30 is when we're planning to meet with some other pastors in town at House of Hope. So if anybody would like to be there to do that, that would be, you know, to get some more information or anything, please come.
I don't, I don't think you need a motion to do that. As long as you, Chief Grady and Chief Lowry are in agreement with it, you can do it temporarily.
Okay. We're good with it. But we'd like you to come back next week. And by that time, Mark can have a little bit more information on the safety aspect. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just, and I kind of echo what Chris is saying, is this enablement situation really bothers me. And I'm not...
No, I completely understand.
I mean, it really, because we don't need to be a 365 day a year facility. So here's my question, I have two. And one of those is for you. And access more comment, because I was looking, because we probably hear more about the homeless cold weather shelters in Springfield, Missouri, here than we do anywhere else when, because everything kicks in, because they go on TV and do everything. And I, I just took a quick look to see what they do. 32 degrees overnight temperature is what they use to open them. And they're not open all the time. They, they do not maintain. And I'm not saying this is what you have to do. I just threw it out there. Apparently, there's two in Springfield, both are housing churches, but they don't open those until it's gonna get below 32 degrees. And obviously, we had several parts of that. But my question is, for example, Tuesday morning and Monday night, you know, the storm system moved in, temperatures bottomed out, it got bitterly cold Monday night, but into Tuesday morning, and the temperature stayed bitterly cold. After you served, and I'm asking out of sheer ignorance, after you serve breakfast, do you put these people back out on the street or do they stay there because of, it is so cold?
We would bring, in the past, what we did is we brought them back to town. We couldn't provide a day shelter as well. But in a, through the week, House of Hope would be open during the day, so they would have that shelter.
Again, I'm asking...
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Well, let me, and if I can tag on that. This year, we did not get the Emergency Solutions Grant. It was the first year in several years. But part of that grant is if you're a day shelter, you have to be open as a warming station when it got, when it gets below a certain temperature. And, or if it gets above a certain temperature. So that was actually the grant itself. But good, bad, or indifferent, we didn't get it again this year. So we're not obligated to that. But still, 32 is pretty cold.
You know, it might be a good idea to have a little more discussion sometime about the homeless topic, you know. Listen to Chris, listen to you. I have a little different opinion. You know, it seems like House of Hope, they bring them in during the day and help them all they can, and then they throw them out at night and they wander around the town. Seems to me like the town and the people themselves would be a lot better if they were kept overnight, permanently. Now, I don't know if that would attract more to come here or not, but it seems like our problem is...
That maybe the problem would be created.
Well, then, the environment that's created is certainly in the minds of the citizens, because I have had people approach me, Mr. Head has, that, you know, have asked me, are we creating an environment where we're enticing people to come to Harrison and then just get, get this? But, you know, there, every case, to Cindy's point, is different. And when you get with these individuals, you see individual issues. One of my concerns, and I've been made aware of it at certain times, and it bothers me that there's not something there, are there, are high school students living here that are living in their cars? Their parents are somewhere else or they don't have parents. Where would they go? And, you know, regardless of that situation, these are students in our community going to school. And that bothers me that they don't have a place.
Well, I think it's a shame that we have to lock the door at 5:00.
I mean, I, I understand. I really do, but it's, we've all heard the stories about, and if you haven't, I'd be glad to have somebody come and share with it. But watching the bus pull into, come and go, and people get off the bus and start walking towards the square. And they were sent here somehow and they found out that Harrison will take care of you, you know.
Yeah.
Boy, it's tough. I mean, it's just, it's a...
It's a fine line, for sure.
Cindy, when you, I'm gonna interrupt you. When you, months ago, came in and talked to us, one of the things that you said is, we're not a handout, we're a hand up. And there was, seemed to be a vetting process or what have you, if people weren't making a forward progress as far as meals and what have you. Who was the lady that came and spoke?
That was House of Hope. But that's, that's House of Hope.
Yes.
And they have a 90-day program. And...
So I'm just addressing the enabling, enabling process of...
Right, right. Because I'm not, I'm not... There was a gentleman there last night who stayed, he just, he got out of rehab. And he had put in for jobs, different places. He was waiting to see if he could get a job. I, he already told me, I said, what about Pace, you don't mind working nights? Because Pace pays well. I mean, Pace pays $16 rent, $16 an hour starting, if you want, if you can work nights. So, and he said, yes, he had put in an application. And frankly, I contacted John Sherman and said, hey, John, could you look at this guy? Because he's homeless. So, so we are trying to help them. Because we just, we don't want them to just come in and, thanks for the food, thanks for letting us use the laundry, thanks for letting me take a shower. I don't want anything else.
Well, we did, and we did, I'm not saying that that did not happen. That did happen. We had a very few people that came in and they were, rejected us even having conversation with us. They were just to eat, but those people didn't come back again. You know, they, they realized that, you know, we want to help them, but we also want to convey the, you know, convey Christ to them. And when, if they're not on board with that, they'll only come once and they won't come again. They didn't come back. I mean, there was a man, a girl, and his, a fellow and his girlfriend that were very much, didn't want to hear anything about it. And then when we wouldn't let them sleep together, then that was the icing on the cake for them. And, you know, they said a few not so nice things and they went to bed and didn't come back the next week.
Obviously, the food's not that good.
Thank you. Come back next week, but you're good to go for that.
I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
Both of you can answer this or either one of you. In Springfield that Bill's talking about, they got the two homes, there are two churches open, one's men, one's women. Are y'all looking at separating men and women down there?
Yes, right, yes, right now. Because we actually had that last night, and we'll have it in tonight, is that, you know what the inside looks like. We're putting the men back by where the conference room is. And we're putting the women up towards the front by the walkway that goes back into the restrooms, to the windows for restaurants.
Are there a barrier between them of any kind?
And that's, when, when we did it, we had them in two separate rooms. And we had a married couple that came in and said, well, we're married. And we said, we don't care. You, women go here, men go here. There's no, no if, ands, or buts about that.
That eliminates the problem.
Right.
Okay, yeah, okay.
We gotta get a barrier of that.
Yeah, sure. Thank you so much.
Yeah, you're welcome, Cindy. Thank you. Thank you, Bill. Okay, next on the agenda is kind of ours also, Joe. We have the auxiliary, the new auxiliary from American Legion. And they'd like to tell you a little bit about what they do. So whoever your spokesman is...
We, we want to start with our commander.
Well, he's not in a, part of the auxiliary, is he?
He's a distinguished...
No, I'm, I'm not exactly the face of the auxiliary. With our brief conversation before we started, may have been a little misunderstanding with regards to what we're doing here. We want to be respectful of your agenda. So may I ask what you had anticipated and what you had on your agenda? I had met earlier with the two ladies, and they explained to me kind of what they, what they wanted to start. It was in the starting process. And it sounded like it made a lot of sense. And we talked about coming to the city council, shared it with the council, mainly for information purposes.
Share our resources.
Yeah. I don't, I don't think there was gonna be a request for funds or anything like that. It was more for information on what the auxiliary and the 22...
We are the 22.
We are the 22, yeah.
The, the reason, the reason I ask is, it's kind of our understanding that each of the veterans group here will be given about two to three minutes to just briefly
to just briefly state who we are, what we see as the needs are in the community. If that was not your understanding, again, I want to be respectful of your agenda. That's fine with us, sir. All right. Yeah, absolutely. We'd love to listen to you talk. I'm sure. I don't know if that's true. I've been accused of being a bit verbose, so. We love, we'd love to hear you.
I did say that, didn't I?
Yes, you did. Yes, you did.
I've, I've heard him several times this week.
I promise that I keep it under forty-five minutes. Uh, very bri, very briefly, uh, I do want to take a moment and thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank the city council for coming to the National Guard opening. I really appreciate you being there. They appreciated it. No community has ever done this for them before. And so it really made Harrison stand out.
Would you please tell everybody your name so that we know?
Yes, I'm Lonnie Anderson. I am the post commander for the American Legion Post Forty-four here in Harrison.
And now that you've mentioned it, the reason that, that I asked you to do that, he did a tremendous job at that event.
Oh, he always does.
And I don't get to go to a lot of events in town, other than council, uh, due to my work commitments.
He did Veterans Day last week.
Yes.
I have to tell you, of all the things that I've been impressed with, the young men in the, uh, that were there, uh, that came into the National Guard, I immediately thanked Mr. Boswell for his service. Um, it was an awesome event. You did a wonderful job.
Well, I thank you for that. But, uh, it's really meant to welcome them. And like you, I'm very impressed with those young men that I saw there.
Very, we are well represented there with those individuals.
All right. Back on, uh, but once, once again, thank you. But again, I'm the post commander for American Legion Post Forty-four here in Harrison. Uh, we're founded in nineteen nineteen, right here in Harrison. So we've been here over a hundred years. We have four pillars, and the first pillar is Veterans Affairs and Rehabilitation. And along those lines, we have several programs that we like to do to address veterans in the community. One, of course, is our Veterans Assistance Fund. And probably we'll have one of the other two commanders talk a little bit more about that. If, in terms of, uh, of what we would like to see, some needs of the veterans here in the community, one thing that is really needed, and it's been a dream of ours for a long, long time, is the Veterans Center. Not quite sure how to go about doing that. But if there is an opportunity that we have to sit down with somebody in the city, the city of Harrison, to discuss that, to talk about it, just open discussions about that, as to what might be possible. I don't know your, your, your rules, I don't know your regulations. I don't, I don't understand any of that. You do. But if there's anything that we can do to open up a discussion about what can we do in the city of Harrison, and Boone County, actually, is Harrison-Boone County Veterans Center, a one-stop place for veterans in the community. Right now, veteran comes in, needs help, where's the American Legion? Well, we don't know. Where's the VFW? We don't know. Where's the DAV? We don't know. One-stop shopping, place for veterans to go. And, uh, we're house of all three, all of the veterans organizations in town, also the county VSO. And that has been a dream of ours for a long time. So that is one thing that maybe we'd like to open up for discussion. But, uh, here with me tonight is Matt Russell with the, uh, uh, he is the, uh, commander for the, uh, uh, Disabled American Veterans, the DAV. And we have Michael, right behind us here, Michael Alsobrook, who is the, uh, commander for the VFW, Veterans of Foreign Wars. And, uh, we have David Jones here with the We Are Twenty-Two. So with that, I'll just go ahead and turn this over to, uh, to Matt Russell. See, I did it, didn't I? I kept him in the fight.
You did good, dog.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, for allowing us to invade this evening. Uh, I've been told that you guys have a very short attention span, so I will try to make this better quick. To care for him who have borne the battle and for his widow and orphan. President Lincoln spoke these words at his second inaugural address in, in eighteen sixty-five. He was assassinated shortly after, but his words lived on. Matter of fact, they were adapted by the Veterans Administration as their motto and their mission. I'm sorry to report to you that we have done a pretty lousy job at supporting President Lincoln's vow. Our returning warriors have died and suffered needlessly, uh, because of their greatest enemy of all, and that's indifference. Um, once a threat of our freedoms and way of life is secured, we quickly forget about these men and women who have made that possible. This fight against indifference is currently led by organizations such as the American Legion, the VFW, and the Disabled American Veterans. And we're here this evening to tell you that there are veterans in our community that are suffering and suffering needlessly. I know this because the past year, I and members of the DAV have been working daily with these veterans and hear their stories and have been trying to help them as much as possible. These stories will break your heart. Some of these veterans have been awarded the Silver and Bronze Star for Valor. Some have Purple Hearts. Many are missing limbs. Their arms and legs are gone. They suffer mental issues such as PTSD and survivor's guilt. That's very common. Another problem we have is most of them are too proud to ask for help. That's one challenge we're trying to overcome. And far too many of our veterans fall through the wide cracks of the VA system. And it falls on us to pick up that slack. Now, I will say that the VA, in the last five years, has improved dramatically. There are many things going on in the VA that are very, very positive. And, uh, I think it's just going to get better from what I'm understanding. But, um, to tell you quickly about the DAV, everybody knows the VFW and American Legion. We stand out in front of stores trying to raise money, and we say, we're the DAV. And they go, who the hell are you?
Exactly.
The Boone County VAD is not, uh, first of all, we're, we've got it over million, one point two million members nationwide. We're one of the largest lobbying organizations for Congress and the Veteran Administration. And I think we've done a pretty good job of that recently. Uh, we also have several national programs. But I can't speak for the, the American Legion or the VFW, or even the National DAV. But I can tell you about the Boone County DAV. We're not a social organization. We have only one purpose, and one purpose only, and that's to help veterans. I know that there's some veterans here I recognize, uh, among the membership. This, uh, we do this in a variety of ways. This past year, we've helped around a hundred and eighty local veterans receive their benefits that they've earned. And we're only second to the county, uh, uh, service officer in, in achieving that. Also, in the past year, we've refurbished and, uh, delivered twenty wheelchairs to disabled veterans, of course, free of charge. In the past three months, we've built five handicap ramps at veterans' houses and made other improvements to make them safer and more functional. In the past two months, we've helped seven veterans with rent, utility bills, gas, and food. Last week, we bought a bed for the three children of an Iraqi veteran. This week, we bought winter coats for children of another Iraqi vet and are helping a Vietnam combat veteran get his one-hundred-year-old house functional so he can live in it and doesn't have to be homeless. And that house is just a couple blocks up the road here on Willow Street. Built some eighteen ninety-five or something. It's an amazing place. And tomorrow morning at nine AM, the DAV is getting an Air Force veteran's ashes released from a funeral home and returned to his widow. They've been held hostage because she hasn't been able to pay the bill. So with the help of the American Legion, we're also giving her a gift card tomorrow so that she has enough to eat for the next couple of weeks till her social security check comes in. And all the Boone County DAVs spent about fourteen thousand dollars in the last three months helping veterans in four counties live better lives. We can't sustain this. We don't have those kind of funds. But we did this to show an example of what could be done if, uh, we had the resources. And one thing I'm, am very happy to report is that the commanders, Lonnie and Mike of the VFW and, uh, American Legion and I have been taking baby steps, working forward to combine our resources. So we aren't fighting, duplicating work, aren't fighting with each other. I understand there's been a little squabbling in the past. We're all very proud organizations and, you know, like to do things our way. But we are taking steps to try to work together to better help the local veterans. And that's sort of the basis of what I, what I'd like to present to you this evening. Because there, I see a four- or five-step process, we all see, of being able to do a better job helping the veterans in this community. One of which is awareness to the problems. The communities really doesn't understand that there's veterans suffering here. The other problem is that sixty-six percent of the veterans nationwide have no idea of the benefits they're entitled to. Okay? Thanks to the Harrison Daily Times, who has just been wonderful with veterans, she's allowed me to write a weekly column to talk about, uh, uh, veterans' issues. And we have gotten a wonderful response off of that. And also this meeting tonight, thanks to you good people. Hopefully, we're bringing some awareness of what the issues are in our community. We also need to attract local church, civic organizations, businesses, and these type people to become part of the solution to helping these veterans. The, um, other thing we need to do is better define what the needs of the veterans are. As you've just heard me talk about, a whole, uh, list of, of varying things. And there are some real issues out there, and they all need treated just a little bit differently. But the biggest thing we need to do is combine our resources. And Lonnie talked about having a vet center or something. But there are a lot of organizations out there to help veterans.
Yes.
And, but unfortunately, uh, they don't work together. The veterans don't know who to go to. Sometimes we actually work against each other. And getting these ashes released, I must have spent thirty phone calls, uh, with different veteran organizations in four counties, trying to get the funds together to get this done. And we are, we did get it done. And tomorrow morning, that widow's going to have her husband's ashes back. Oops, uh, that bothers me very much. So, um, you know, basically, this is just an initial conversation that I would like to, for you folks, to noodle a little bit and to think about ways where maybe we can bring all this together. And for this county and our community and your constituents, uh, to me and Lonnie and Mike, I think the ideal way to accomplish this is if the leaders of the city, the leaders of the county, the leaders of the churches and, and business leaders get together and come up with some type of a combined effort to pool all these resources, such as the House of Hope, which I think is a wonderful, uh, organization. I know they house some homeless veterans down there. Um, and some, uh, uh, basically noodle all this out. There's a lot of bright minds sitting around this table. I don't have all the answers, um, but, uh, I do have a lot of energy to put into this. So, um, if any of you would like to contact me, please do so, or Lonnie, or Mike, and we'll be happy to sit down and talk, uh, talk your ear off about this. There's a lot of charitable organizations, done a lot of great things for a lot of great people. However, veterans who proudly and honorably served our country need to be put at the top of the list. Because if not for them, the freedoms we too often take for granted, you know, wouldn't exist. So with that, are there any questions?
I'd be more than happy to meet with you, maybe next week. Put a meeting together. I've got some thoughts I'd like to share with you. But, uh, council members, do you have any questions or comments?
Hey, with that, um.
I learned a lot, I'll say that.
I'm sorry, what?
He opened my eyes up a lot. I learned a lot of what all of this available.
Well, good. I think that's a good, good first step, and thank you for hearing me. Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
As Lonnie said, I'm Michael Alsobrook, commander of the Veterans of Foreign Wars. I'd like to thank, you know, Catherine Hirsch is the president of auxiliary for strong-arming our way into the council meeting.
I know.
One of the biggest concerns I have, veterans in the communities, and I, I've dealt with this a lot in my professional life, is the emergency responders responding to a veteran in crisis, whether it's a domestic situation, or they're on drugs, or alcohol, or it's a suicide thing. There are, you know, being a veteran doesn't absolve you of your crimes. But there's programs available specifically to veterans that aren't available, such as Veterans Courts and things like that. Currently, there's not a Veterans Court in the Fourteenth Judicial District. The closest one, I believe, is in Huntsville, over in Madison County. And that's something I'm working on, trying to find out why there's not one here, what the requirements are. And I would just like to, uh, get with, you know, maybe Chief Lowry and Chief Grady to kind of talk with them about the resources available to their responders when dealing with veterans. Just to help everybody be on the same page of what's available. I believe we actually have David Jones here, who's going to talk more about the suicide response and the intervention of that, so I'm not going to steal his thunder. But that's just my brief little spiel. If anybody's got any questions for me, or I'll turn it over to Doc here.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Dave Jones. I'm a retired combat medic. And I'm here with We Are the Twenty-Two. We are a nonprofit, veteran-to-veteran, suicide intervention and prevention. We are statewide. Um, I know back on October twentieth, Mr. Wooton completed his suicide.
Yes.
Had we known, we could have responded. I live locally. We have one other responder that is certified locally. So our response time is next to nothing. We're currently tracking a young man that I responded to right before Halloween. We're doing follow-up care. We made sure he was safe. We got a phone call. We responded. It took my second responder, because we go in two-man teams, always. It took him almost three hours because my other one wasn't certified at the time. There are resources out there for our veterans. But we, you know, don't know about it unless somebody tells us, you know. I didn't know about the, the sharing care. I didn't know about, you know, the House of Hope until last month. I mean, I don't know. I've only been here a little over a year. You're our eyes. If you see a veteran that is in crisis, we have an eight-hundred number. We're on Facebook, We Are the Twenty-Two. We have a website, wearethe22.com. We need people to be our eyes and let us know, hey, we've got somebody in crisis. We respond. We do not give up on them. We actually go to their house or wherever they're at, assess the situation. I took one young man from Yellville to Fayetteville VA Hospital. He spent four days at the VA, getting his mind straight. Right now, he's, he's doing better. We're still tracking him. We do the follow-up care. We make sure that they don't relapse into what got them there in the first place. That after, you know, we take care of that veteran, I'll take my hat off, put on my VFW hat. As the others have mentioned, we made a little coalition. All right? Now, I've got additional resources, because I'm involved, to where I can say, hey, the VFW can't help, we don't have that type of resource, but the DAV does. And if the DAV, you know, comes around, because we meet once a month. There's four of us that meet. And we discuss what has been done to help these veterans. And we keep running the list, so... But if we don't have the community looking and being our eyes, then there's nothing for us to do. And by that time, it's too late. So I just want to make sure that everybody knows that there are resources out there, trained people for emergency crisis like the suicides.
Do you have one general number that you would call? I mean, we're on Facebook Live. I don't know if we want to just mention a number.
Okay, I actually have my business cards. But yes, it is one eight five five nine three two seven three eight four, which is We Are the Twenty-Two. It's manned twenty-four seven, and it's for any veteran in the state of Arkansas. I do have my business cards here that actually has my home number on the backside so I can be contacted directly. Because I have made the call up the chain of command to get a secondary responder to, to a person in crisis.
Would you repeat the phone number, please?
It is one eight five five nine three two seven three eight four.
David, we have a lady in the audience that has a question.
I have a question about the emergent suicide attempt, suicide situation, domestic situation. That is an awesome thing, but what is going to absolve from a medical standpoint? There are HIPAA laws in place that those emergency personnel cannot divulge information about a patient to outside without permission. And if they're in some type of crisis, they're not mentally there. Can they truly get consent for that? I mean, what are, I mean, it's, right, it's a, it's a, because nobody knows a vet like a vet.
Exactly.
I mean, that's, you know, I totally, you know, may, maybe that's something that you're looking into, that that's, because that is like, you get your, you'll get fired for, for giving a name out.
If you were, if you were to call this, this hotline, though, it is actually anonymous, am I correct?
You can be anonymous.
Anonymous. You can be anonymous, but then that's your, that's still your standards is like, you know, you did something wrong.
It would be no different than calling the police department for a welfare check.
Basically, the same thing.
Yes, and I, I get what you're saying. Yeah, there's got to be some kind of, of way around that. But it is something in the medical community you have to be very careful about.
Yeah, being retired medic, I understand. But once we take control of the situation and we pass up the next higher medical, if necessary, we've got the consent. It is the mental health people that will actually make the diagnosis. Up until then, it's implied consent.
Does that, I don't know, does that imply or apply to the police? I know, like, because I know HIPAA is medical, but are police bound by those standards? I don't, I, I don't know. I mean, if somebody responds to a call and they come to that and they see that that's the police could call, right? Without it.
We've actually had, um... We've actually had Newton County Sheriff Deputy call us, because that was my second response. They called us to, hey, you know, we've responded to this guy before, you know, he does have weapons, so we've got them as backup.
Right.
All right? They didn't tell us that, you know, all the details. They just, no one up to, you know, get us there safely.
Right.
And for us to determine whether or not, you know, just being in the air form, or if they actually need to go into the VA system.
Okay, David, I think Catherine wants to talk. If you're done, we can bring her up.
I was not ready to bring her up.
We were...
Hold it, David. Before I step away, that's a pretty sensitive issue, because I had the lieutenant of mine commit suicide.
I attempted myself.
60 days ago?
Yeah.
How much does the table know what the number 22 means?
Yeah, what is that?
There is a significance behind the number of the 22.
22 veterans a day. And as of this morning, no, I'm going to give you actual numbers. As of this morning, 202 police and correction officers committed suicide, 146 fire and EMS, 6,826 active-duty and veterans, as of January 1st to this morning. So you're talking almost 7,000 people. The VA has come out and said, "We average 6,000 a year for the last 10 years." We are, we do have a crisis.
22, 22 a day.
There's three of us here right now that are military veterans. Most everybody knows I did VA stuff, too. One thing, I'm just going to address your question because of what I did, and David's going to go along with me. When you have a call like that, that person's asking for help. They're not asking for medical help. They're not necessarily asking for anything else. They're asking for help. That's a call for help.
Yes.
And the best person to respond to that call for help is another veteran.
Well, I agree. I agree.
And you're still not going to have to deal with, because when we go there, if David goes, if Bill called me and said, "Hey, I need you," I'm going to go with Bill, okay? We're going to talk. Now, there may be an individuality that it may go further, but that's, that's what we're hoping to stop. It's not just make anything go. We want it to be good. That's what we want out of it. Too many of us have dealt with this. We've been there, okay? And, you can see right here.
There you see.
When I was doing VA stuff, I didn't have him. I didn't have him with VA. There's slower responding people.
Well, thank you.
We know that.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to interject that.
Thank you, Doc.
Yes, sir. Wow.
Hey. My name is Catherine Hirsch. I'm the president of the American Legion Auxiliary Unit 44 here in Harrison, Arkansas, and I did want to apologize if there is a miscommunication on who would be speaking tonight. Basically, we are the wives, mothers, daughters, and granddaughters of veterans. We're looking for new members and new volunteers, but we can't do anything that we do without these men who served their country, and now they're serving their community, and that, I mean, it's a passion project for me. Our organization's primary objective is to assist the American Legion veteran causes. Right now, our biggest goal is starting a veteran food pantry in Boone County for homeless and food insecure veterans and military families. I'm here representing the auxiliary to humbly ask this community for support and to make the public aware that our organization, along with these organizations, are resources available for veterans and for military families. They don't know. Our community at large does not know. Being a woman, there are other daughters and mothers, caretakers, that are watching their veterans suffer, and their veterans are afraid to ask for help. There's a pride issue there. If there are women who feel more comfortable talking to a woman, our organization's here for them. That's a huge goal for our auxiliary and the purpose for why we're here. You can look us up on Facebook, or come by the Elks Lodge in Harrison. That's where we meet, along with the Legion and the VFW. It's just north of Walmart. Our next meeting is Saturday, December 7th, at 9:30 AM, and our meetings are always open to the public, so any of you are welcome to attend. We would love to have you there, because we're moving. We're, we just started up. I was elected president the first week of October, and we're just trying to get off the ground, because there's a lot of work that needs to be done, as you've all heard. I'm sure that there's a lot of information you didn't know about, that you've heard about tonight. These men are working so hard, and they need help. So thank you for listening to us.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Linda, anything?
No.
Mary Jean?
No, we're working on something for council, Mark and I.
You are?
Yeah. Well, actually, Mark is, is co-delegation.
Bill Boswell?
Nothing.
Nothing? Mr. Hammond?
No, sir.
You're good, too. Okay. Looks like our next meeting is a week from tonight. Anybody from the audience want to say anything else?
I would just like to encourage, we do have a Boone County Resource Council, and I know that, I think, they're talking about building together. We've also talked about the homeless situation with Chief Grady, had a couple meetings with that. We're trying to work towards getting an MOU, so that when people do come in for services, that we're signing where all of these councils can, can share information, so that they don't have to go to each individual. We can pull all that together. So I would encourage more of that. If y'all haven't been to the Resource Council, I would encourage that.
Actually, I need to put a page. Is that one Rebecca Summers?
Uh, yes. So I would encourage getting with them.
Absolutely.
And then with Shonda, and then if we can pull Sidney County and just start building a council to address the homeless and veterans all together, I think we could pull a whole lot of services and resources together and accomplish something that needs to be made.
And when is that meeting?
Mr. Crockett?
I don't know.
Anything you would like to share?
Yeah, I would like to invite anybody here, if they want to, Monday night at 7:00 o'clock at the Duran Center. We're going to have a community discussion on whether or not we might be able to attract a wife state in the area.
Okay, thank you. Floyd, good to see you. Ex-councilman, is on the planning commission. Okay, if nothing else, motion to adjourn. Mary Jean?
Absolutely. I'm good on that one.
Always. Thank you. Thank you all for coming. I'd like to see you, hon.